Good evening. Thank you, Dr. Duka and members of the Board of Education for providing BSTA with this opportunity. Joining me today are members of our BSTA Board of Directors, Mrs. Blanchett, Mrs. Larkin, and Mrs. Quinn. The Boston Spa Teachers Scholarship Fund has been in existence since 1960 and is funded solely through the donations from our current and retired members. Through the generosity of our membership, I am pleased to announce we are presenting five scholarships this evening in two categories. I would like to thank the Board of Education and Administration for their continued commitment into offering an array of educational experiences to help our students be successful now and in the future. This year's recipients of the BSTA Scholarship are dedicated students who have taken advantage of those opportunities and have been active in the Boston Spa community. The members of the Boston Spa Teachers Association are proud of your accomplishments and we wish you every success in college and in your future careers. Our first category tonight is the BSTA Scholarship for Community Service First Response, which is designed to recognize and support students who have demonstrated that they are community-oriented and plan to attend an accredited college, university, or enroll in a program of study with the intent to pursue a career to being a first responder. Tonight, we recognize Chris Dumay and Jared Gilston, who will receive this one-time award of $500. Mrs. Larkin.
Chris, you want to come on up? Jared couldn't be with us this evening, so I'm just going to say a few words about Chris first, and then I'll talk about Jared. Chris is a dedicated member of the first responder community. He also showed some academic chops by graduating early in January. Chris has been active in many different activities here, including robotics, football, and 4H. He joined the Saratoga County Sheriff Explorer Program at 14 and later that year, the Fire Explorer Program. He joined the Round Lake Fire Department, earning their Fire Department Service Award while also earning many certifications, including Emergency Medical Technician. At that time, Chris was the youngest EMT working in Saratoga County. Chris's Round Lake Chief Safety Officer, Paul R. Parker, had this to say about Chris. "Chris became an integral member of our organization. From his time as chief of our junior firefighter program to completing his New York State Firefighter I certification, Chris was one of our most dedicated members." While Chris has taken his talents to the state of Maine, BSTA is proud to support his new endeavors and award him the BSTA Community Service Scholarship. Congratulations, Chris. I'll say a few things about Jared as well. He couldn't be here tonight. Jared wrote in his essay that firefighting as a career is more than putting out fires. He wrote about how, as a first responder, he aids the elderly, aids motorists and community members on a variety of tasks, from changing smoke detector batteries to digging out cars during a snowstorm. Jared has found friendship and training with his other co-responders and admits that his career choice is making him a better person. Chief of Malta Ridge Volunteer Fire Company, Peter Shaw, stated that Jared is a valuable volunteer who continues to grow in his community spirit. We're happy to present Jared with the BSTA Community Service Scholarship. Congratulations.
The second category is our Field of Education Scholarship, which is to recognize and support students who plan to pursue degrees within the field of education. Tonight, we have three recipients who will receive a one-time award of $1,500.
Glasses? I'm old. Hi, I'm Cory Quinn. I've been teaching French for 33 years. I've been given the honor to present two scholarships to two amazing young ladies. Before I bring them up individually, I want to just say that they are not normal. Okay, well, we are not normal. Our journey hasn't been normal. We've bonded more than any other group of seniors, and they've bonded with each other. COVID gets blamed for a lot of negatives, but I think COVID is why the class of 2023 is as tight as they are. They were so happy to be back in school in person, and every fun activity was even more fun than before. They have really connected because of it. These two young ladies are two of the nicest kids I've ever taught, and I've loved seeing them blossom these last two years. They've gone from quiet, shy sophomores hiding behind their computers and masks to outgoing, confident, happy seniors and soon-to-be graduates. I'm going to start with Lee. Come on down. This is Lee McKinley. And if you don't know her, Lee is a worker. Lee is the class of 2023 salutatorian. She gets the job done, and she does so without complaint, and she always has that smile. Do you see that smile? She always has it. She's an avid sailor and became a sailing instructor, and that is where she developed her passion for teaching. In her essay, when talking about instructing, she said that her favorite moments were the little moments. She said that she loves learning about the kids as individuals and getting to know them as people. She wants to excite the kids about learning. She said that on the difficult days, she went home and questioned whether or not she was doing a good job. She wants to balance fun with learning and have an impact on students' lives. Those are the same comments that a veteran teacher would say. I would say those things after 33 years in the classroom. Lee hasn't taught in the classroom yet, but she already knows what teaching is all about. Lee will be a teacher who brings a smile, a quiet laugh, and her kind heart to whatever classroom that's lucky enough to get her. I wish her the best the world has to offer. Congratulations. They were instructed well that they're not allowed to cry, because then that makes me cry. We don't have to do that. Maddie Baloo, come on down, Maddie B. Awkward fun walk, isn't it great? You know, we like it. So Maddie B. brought in a dress for show and tell. It was about this big, and it was green. And along with it was a video with her about six years old?
Two.
Two! Excuse me, I'm a little off. I didn't have children, so I'm just randomly guessing about ages. You must have been a little older than that. And she's dancing on this stage in this green dress. She's dancing like no one's watching. Everybody was watching. It was so cute. She's twirling in her pretty little green dress. She's happy. She's smiling. She's having a great time. That is Maddie B. That sums her up. Maddie's a musician. Music is in her blood. Maddie plays music because she loves it, and it makes her happy. And when you listen to her playing music, it makes you happy because she's happy. Are you catching on to a theme? In her essay, Maddie talks about how she was a little scared when she started working with children. Aren't we all? Until she realized that kids just want someone to be there for them, to listen to them, to care about them, to help them. She said that she learned she doesn't have to be the best teacher, but that if she's there for them, she'd be good enough. But what she doesn't understand yet is that that is what makes you the best teacher. As adults, we may not remember how to conjugate the verb chantais in French or the lines to Macbeth, but what we do remember is the feelings that we're left with. What Maddie's students will leave with is a smile, a feeling that they mattered, and a lifelong love of music and dancing like no one's watching. Congratulations.
Peyton's essay exemplified how teachers find their love for the profession. Peyton started working at a summer camp, then babysat for those same families, and then this year became an intern at Wood Road Elementary School, working with both first and fifth graders. All of this experience grew her love for children and teaching. Peyton writes in her essay that she realized that one of her finer traits is patience, and she also wrote that her internship experience helped to bring her out of her shell. Brad Firsch, a fifth-grade teacher at Wood Road, wrote of Peyton, "Peyton always displayed the utmost respect, along with positive character traits such as caring, thoughtfulness, empathy, and flexibility that served her well as a student, a classmate, a person, and a future teacher." I also heard that first graders chanted her name, Peyton, 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 as she visited Wood Road in her cap and gown with other graduates. I am pleased to present Peyton with BSTA's Teaching Scholarship. Congratulations.
Including this year's scholarship awards, BSTA is proud to award $1,000, excuse me, $141,900 since 1960. On behalf of all the members of the Boston Spa Teachers Association and our community, congratulations on your accomplishments. We wish you continued success in your pursuit of higher education. Congratulations.
And I'd just like to add, thank you so much to Ms. Poussetteri and our executive board, and thank you so much for all that the Teachers Association does for our district.
Next up, we have Coach Matt Girmann, who's going to present to one of our athletes.
Good evening. I'd like to first thank the board for allowing me to come here and recognize one of our athletes tonight. I've been coaching for just over 20 years, and I can honestly say there's very few things that are a first for me, but this athlete did something that is a first for me in over 20 years, which is really amazing. I'm going to talk about it in a second, but first, I would like to call up Harriet Healy, I've been very fortunate over those 20 years, and especially here at Boston Spa, to have a handful of exceptional athletes that have moved on to very, very prestigious Division I, Division II, and Division III college careers. I think that's where Harriet's headed. She has a very promising future, and I know that because every time I brag about her to anyone and everyone that I see, I followed up with, "And she's only a junior," and they're shocked because they usually ask me what she's doing next year. I'm just going to give you a couple of stats on things that she's accomplished this year. It's a pretty amazing list, so I'll keep it a little bit short. Harriet, first of all, has shown great improvement, which is tough when you're running at the level that she's running at already, but she started off running hurdles this year right around 67 seconds, which is still unbelievably fast for even the elite runners. She dropped that time by just over five seconds and is now running 62.01. That time is really, really important because that time puts her on the Section II All-Time List in fifth place, behind several records that were from 1984 and 1993. That puts her on first on the leaderboard for this year in all of Section II, which includes the likes of Saratoga, who is currently ranked number one in the nation as a cross-country and track program. She also does many things that no one else would even dare try, which is run four events, but the four events that she runs are absolutely brutal. There's an ongoing debate. I, as her coach, who ran the 800, and then a 400 hurdler, as which event is the toughest on the track. But when you pair that with the 400 right before it, which she did several times, I would say that the winner goes to the 400 hurdles. What she did this year, and things that stand out, are things like the meet at sectionals. She decided it was more important to look and set a goal much bigger than sectionals, which was the state meet. So she decided to run four events, and she had approximately three and a half minutes between her 400-meter race and her 400-meter hurdle race. And that was by choice. So then we said, "Why don't you take the four-by-four off?" Which she insisted, "Absolutely not." So she's a team player beyond all else. Other things that I'm very, very impressed and very happy to announce about Harriet is she did the same thing at the Eddie Meet, which is one of the biggest meets in the entire area. Again, due to COVID, this is her first chance to see that level of this meet, right down the road in Schenectady, but we're very fortunate to have it here. But she ran the double event. This time, luckily, she had 15 minutes. She was able to not only run both events, but win both the 400 and 400 hurdles. And because of this, she also was nominated as Athlete of the Meet, which is a huge accomplishment, something I've never had happen in my career. But she wasn't done there. Based on all of this time, that 62.01 put her 24th in the entire country. And if you look at just juniors and you take out all the others, she's actually number eight in the entire nation in her event. All of this led to an amazing race that happened right in the beginning of June, where she is my first-ever, again, after 20-some years and multiple athletes at the college level, one who actually almost made the Olympic trials. She is my first-ever state champion. Harriet, running the 62.01, became the fastest girl in New York this year in the 400 hurdles, and she is, I believe, I do have to check the records, I believe she's Boston Spas' also first individual state champion. So congratulations to Harriet Healy.
Next, we have Dr. Chaucer, who will be recognizing one of our district librarians.
Thank you so much. Good evening, Dr. Duka and board members. Tonight, I'm very pleased to share that our Milton Terrace Librarian, Sheila McIntyre, was named the Wish We Bozies School Librarian of the Year Award. Sheila was selected by the School Library Services Awards Committee, who unanimously voted her the winner of this prestigious recognition. Our Milton Terrace Building Leadership Team submitted a group nomination where we included recommendations from four teachers, two administrators, and four students. While our submission essay was extensive, I'm just going to share a little bit of it with you tonight, and I will just note that I did not realize when I wrote this that we would have four Milton Terrace former students here with us tonight, and I'm going to be quoting one of them, so this worked out really well. So our staff said, "Both in and out of the library, Sheila is a true leader and inspiration. Our students absolutely love going to the library because Sheila makes it such an engaging, exciting place filled with wonder and knowledge. As we have implemented a new literacy curriculum, Sheila has participated in many professional development opportunities, understanding that the library is the center of any solid learning environment. Sheila does not stop being our students' librarian when they leave us, as she stays in touch with many families and students, continuing to suggest books and just check in to see how they're doing." And I was going to say, a former student said this, but it was actually Lee McKinley, who's in the audience tonight. She said, "Mrs. McIntyre was one of my favorite teachers that I will never forget. She knew all of our students so well that she would suggest the perfect book for each child. She cared about every student and went above and beyond to connect with us." Sheila was recognized by the Wish We Bozies on June 8th, where a big group of our staff and Sheila's family were present to celebrate her accomplishment. I thank you for recognizing her here tonight and ask that you join me in congratulating her. Thank you.
And then continuing with our list of awards from Wish We, we have Mr. Al Matice. Please come on up, Al. Al was named Administrator of the Year by Wish We Bozies School Library Services. So this is Al's first year with the district. He's an assistant principal at the high school, and he was nominated by our first-year high school librarian, Ms. Sarah Gunner-Morfoot, who explained how instrumental Al has been in her first year here at the high school, always offering support and helping her create different ways for students to come and enjoy the library, different programmings, but always really a sounding board for her, and really supporting her to the best of his abilities and allowing her to really take chances and grow and really make the library a true community place for high school students. So for that, Al, this is a well-deserved award, and congratulations.
Thank you, Dr. Duka. For those of you who were here just for the recognition, if you would like to excuse yourselves from the meeting, you're certainly welcome to, or you could choose to stay and hear the board's business. It is now the time of our evening where it's our first public comment period. We do have public comment, and as always, I will just read our guidance on public comment. "So the Board of Education welcomes district residents, parents, and other interested persons to its meeting. Community involvement at board meetings is encouraged so the board can better understand and represent the views of its constituents. Please be aware, however, that information such as individual student information or particular personnel issues cannot be discussed at public sessions of the board. Speakers will be called upon individually. When recognized by the board president, ask to approach the podium, state your name and residence. Statements are restricted to a maximum of two minutes, and speakers will be notified by the board president when his or her time has expired. Please address the board as a whole and not any individual board member or staff member. The board and the district staff take the public comment very seriously. However, the board will not respond to comments or questions during the public comment period. Board asks the public's cooperation in maintaining a safe and respectful environment. Board president reserves the right to limit individual comments if it is deemed necessary. And to achieve this, speakers will please not make slanderous attacks on any group, organization, or individual, a member of the board, an employee of the district, a member of the audience, or a member of the public. Will please not use profane, vulgar, threatening, or disparaging language, or racial or ethnic slurs. Please not disrupt the meeting with loud outbursts or other disruptive conduct or behavior, either during the speaker's assigned time or at any other time during the meeting. Speakers understand that a failure to comply with these rules for maintaining a respectful and productive environment may result in early termination of the speaker's allotted time, a denial of future requests to speak, and any other actions deemed necessary by the president of the board, or where appropriate in a matter of health and safety measures, the superintendent of schools." And so, please, we approach the podium. Amanda McVeigh.
Sorry, this is my first time as a parent, standing up for my son, Nathan McVeigh. I have contacted the guidance counselor about him coming into the Bozies program to graduate with all this confidence that everybody's, that everybody has come in here for. I'm an advocate for my son to succeed with a student with a disability. He is diagnosed with a disability, and this is what I'm trying to get my son to succeed in the future education for him. And I was put on hold stating that he is on a waiting list, while come to find out, the waiting list is not happening. And I believe this is his success in school for the Bozies program to attend the construction because he needs hands-on with a disability of an ADHD, an ADD child. I have not been notified through the councils, through his guidance counselors throughout the years, and I've contacted them, but nobody's gotten back to me. So now, come to find out, the Bozies program is not qualified for him because when I got the email, or the schedule for next year, thank you. When I got his schedule for the next year, 2023, he, I called and contacted his guidance counselor and said, "I have a problem with his schedule because she, it says in the thing that, 'Do you, do you have any questions?'" And yes, I've emailed the guidance counselor through everything and said, "My son has ADD, and I just got the paperwork saying that he has ADHD, so it's more classified for him to have control over something." So at this point, I contacted everybody and kept going through the line and going through the line, and at this point, I'm expressing my concern for my son because he has ADD and ADHD, and I need him to get into the Bozies program because it's a certification for him to further his career. Because the hands-on, he cannot pull himself to one task, or he can only pull himself to one task at a time. So for him to succeed, I'm asking for him to be put through a certification program, and the Bozies program has that, that I'm asking for. I'm also a graduate from the Bozies program in a different district. I also am doing as much advocacy for my son as possible. So that's trying to pull myself together. I've never done this, so bear with me. But I have to fight for my son and to get him to succeed as much as possible because of his disability. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Next on our agenda is our Student Government Report.
Good evening, everyone. On behalf of the student body, we wanted to thank all of the board, Dr. Duka, Mr. Murphy, and all of the principals, assistant principals, and teachers of the district for another successful school year. This year was a return to normalcy, and we, as students, can't thank you enough for that.
And I have one final thank you, and it is for the person to my left. Selena, congratulations and thank you for guiding student government this past year. It's been amazing to learn from you. As you walk across the stage tomorrow, please know your student government family is cheering you on, and we can't wait to hear about your next adventure. Student government looks forward to early September, where we will welcome the class of 2027 to the high school with freshman orientation activities, cheering on our fall sports teams, and celebrating our Scotty Pride at Homecoming, beginning October 16th. As always, thank you for all of your support, and have a wonderful summer.
Well, thank you very much, and both of you have a wonderful summer, and you may excuse yourself from the meetings. I usually say to go do homework, but that's not. So go have fun. Next up on our agenda is approval of minutes. May I have a motion to approve the minutes for the June 7th, 2023 regular meeting?
So moved.
Second.
Any amendments or additions? Not hearing any. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Minutes are approved. It's now time for our superintendent's report. Dr. Duka?
We do not have a superintendent. We do not have a superintendent's report tonight.
Committee reports. Don't believe we have committee reports?
No committee reports either.
From our committee chairs, no committee reports? Correspondents. Dr. Duca, correspondence to the district?
We have four total, all emails regarding student matters.
Correspondence to the board. Since the last meeting, the board received one email, and that was a thank you to our board member, Tim Turbiak, for supporting our after-prom goers by donating DJ services. I understand maybe at a future meeting, we might have DJ services at a meeting? It was, professional.
Yes, and everybody entertained the whole thing.
Well, again, the email was very complimentary and a big thank you, and thank you very much, Tim, for supporting our students at the after-prom. Announcements. Mr. Williams.
Since nobody else had any. The, just a couple of things. I know Jason mentioned a couple of the ceremonies. We'd already had three elementary ceremonies today with the fifth graders moving up, being recognized, and some of the awards given to them, you know, this morning. Tomorrow morning is the Wood Road Ceremony at 10:00 a.m., followed by graduation's going to be at 4:00 o'clock. We just got the link to the live broadcast, so we started sending that out today. So if anybody, obviously you guys are going to be there on stage, but if you want to share it with friends and family and, you know, relatives all around the world, you can send out the link. But we're trying to get that out now. On the next morning, for the eighth grade moving up ceremony, they were still planning on the stadium field, the last I knew, for 9:00 Friday morning. There's some weather issues, so everybody's debating back and forth whether we need to move inside or not. If it moves inside, it'll be in the high school gymnasium. So that'll be a treat to be packed into the gymnasium with all those students. But we will try to have a live link for that as well, so you can watch for that on Friday morning. And obviously, we'll get that information out as quick as possible. And that's our last day of school for the school year, for half-days at the middle school as well as the elementary schools. And your next meeting is July 12th. We'll start at 6:30 for your reorganization meeting. Thank you.
Any other, other announcements from the district?
No.
Board members? All right. Any old business? All right, on to new business. So first off, our resolution number 610 needs to be amended. So the resolution is for our district-wide safety plan. The approval of the district-wide safety plan is a two-step process. There is a 30-day period for public comment, and the existing resolution in the agenda is actually the second step in it, which is the approval after the 30-day posting period for public comment. So I'm going to read the amended resolution 610 in its entirety, and then I'm going to ask for a motion to accept the amended resolution versus the resolution that is in the agenda. And the amended resolution reads, "Be it resolved by the Board of Education of the Boston Spa Central School District that the district-wide safety plan for the 2023-2024 school year be posted for public comment and tabled for the required 30-day period, be and is hereby approved." So may I have a motion to accept the amended resolution, number 610, District-Wide Safety Plan?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Everyone understands what happened? Okay. Not hearing any, more than all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Resolution number 610, the amended version for the district-wide safety plan passes. I have a motion to approve resolution number 611, Agreement, Boston Area Recreation Commission.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Not hearing any. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Resolution number 611 passes. I have a motion to approve resolution number 612, Agreement, Professional Services.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Not hearing any. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Resolution number 612 passes. I have a motion to approve resolution number 613, Agreement, Professional Services.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Not hearing any. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Resolution number 613 passes. May I have a motion to approve resolution number 614, Agreement, Professional Services?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Not hearing any. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Resolution number 614 passes. May I have a motion to approve resolution number 615, Award of Bid and Contract Food Service Program?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Not hearing any. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Resolution number 615 passes. I have a motion to approve resolution number 616, Scholarship Dissolved.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Not hearing any. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Resolution number 616 passes. Thanks to all who supported this scholarship for so many years. I have a motion to approve resolution number 617, Scholarship Change.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Not hearing any. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Resolution number 617 passes. Thank you to those who continue to make this scholarship available. I have a motion to approve resolution number 618, Obsolete Textbooks.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Not hearing any. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Resolution number 618 passes. I have a motion to approve resolution number 619, Memorandum of Agreement, Boston Spa Teachers Association.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Not hearing any. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Resolution number 619 passes. I have a motion to approve resolution number 620, Memorandum of Agreement, Spa Academy.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Not hearing any. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Resolution number 620 passes. I have a motion to approve resolution number 621, Placement of Students with Disabilities.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Not hearing any. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Resolution number 621 passes. I have a motion to approve resolution number 622, Placement of Preschool Students with Disabilities.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Not hearing any. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Resolution number 622 passes. Resolutions number 623 through 641 are recognized as a consent agenda for the purpose of Board of Education action. May I have a motion to approve the consent agenda, resolutions number 623 through 641?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Not hearing any. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? The consent agenda, resolutions number 623 through 641 passes. We do have a walk-on resolution this evening. Walk-on resolution is resolution number 642, Agreement, Special Education. I will read it in its entirety. Resolution number 642, Agreement, Special Education. Be it resolved by the Board of Education of the Boston Spa Central School District that it authorizes its designee to enter into a settlement agreement regarding a special education matter involving student number 274519 for the 2022-2023 school year, be and is hereby approved. May I have a motion to walk on resolution number 642, Agreement, Special Education?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Resolution number 642 is walked on. May I have a motion to approve resolution number 642, Agreement, Special Education?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Not hearing any. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Resolution number 642 passes. That is it for our resolutions. We're now at the time. Any other new business? Okay, it's now time for our second public comment period. Do we have anyone signed up for our second public comment period? We do not. Thank you, Mr. Williams. It's now time where we could have statements from our associations, PTAs, PTSA. And I will start us off. I have a statement from our president of the Assistant Teachers Association, Ms. McGowan. She says she would please share that I hope everyone has a safe, healthy, and happy summer, that the sponsored barbecue was an amazing success, and therefore I look forward to providing a BS ATA scholarship to a graduating senior from the class of 2024. So we thank Ms. McGowan for her message. Do we have any of our other associations represented? Yes?
Yes, on behalf of the Teachers Association, thank you for your time and effort and service for the community of Boston Spa, and obviously the students of Boston Spa, and we wish you all a wonderful summer. Thank you.
Thank you very much, very much. PTA announcements?
Just that PTAs are showing their appreciation for staff throughout the district. Milton Terrace informed me they had a staff appreciation lunch today, and that planning still goes on during December, so any way you can help out your PTAs, you know, reach out to your board members.
Okay. Wonderful.
Yeah, I'd just like to thank members of the BSTA negotiating team and the district's negotiating team. There was a lot of hours of preparation that went into the settlement agreement, but I wanted to thank both parties involved for a smooth process. Thank you.
I will certainly add my thanks as well on behalf of the board. And that might be it. We do not have reason to go into executive session. This is our last board meeting of the school year. As Mr. Williams said, our next board meeting will be on July 12th, 6:30 for a reorganization meeting with our regular business meeting to follow. May I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.